Presentation. I think it's on census.
Great, thank you, Mayor Council. Our first presentation this afternoon is regarding the 2020 census. And we have Tara Olson and Jonathan Lawler to walk us through that presentation. And so I think I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan first. Mr. Lawler.
Thank you. Good afternoon, y'all. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. And I assume the AV folks will be putting up a PowerPoint presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is current.
Awesome. Thank you, City Manager, for the introduction, although I would be missed if I didn't say that my mother didn't name me John. I'm not a thin, not a Jonathan. But thank you anyways. I had a lot of teachers growing up who loved to call me Jonathan. But moving on here into this presentation, the plan was to have Ryan Robinson, our city demographer, join us. We'd like to go ahead and go to the next slide. Actually, this may be incorrect PowerPoint, but originally this would have had Ryan Robinson up there at the top. We'd like to go on to the next slide. What we'll be going over with y'all here today is just reintroducing this, this local effort, as well as some of the updates from our outreach efforts. You'd like to go to the next slide? I apologize. I'm very, very accustomed to having control of the PowerPoint deck, so I'll do my best to move as fast as possible. If you'd like to go ahead and click through here, these bullet points, I always like to start things off by showing just the sheer amount of funding that is impacted by the census. Bruce Elfon, our county tax assessor collector, always likes to remind folks that for every individual not counted, fifteen hundred dollars is lost in federal funding. Let's go on to the next slide. But also, the census is not only about dollars, it's about representation. So if we'd like to click through the bullet points here. One of the major impacts the census has is on the apportionment of congressional seats. So on the next slide, you'll see a map there of what's at stake in terms for our state and around the country for additional congressional seats. They're not adding seats to Congress, they're just simply moving around how many each state has. So if we were to correctly get ourselves counted here in Texas, it's expected that we could gain more than three seats in the US Congress. Also, just a simple reminder, as many on the councilors are aware, but maybe not for the public, is that we use census data from school board trustee seats, city council seats on up. So it impacts every elected official seat pretty much throughout local government, as well as state government and federal. Next slide, please. There have been some significant changes to the timeline for this particular census. COVID-19 has had a huge impact on the ability of the Census Bureau to go out and get folks counted in person. A lot of times when folks think of the census, they think of the enumerators who go door to door. Of course, that was, that had to been, had to be canceled as a result of COVID. And so you'll, you'll see here that they've actually extended the total timeline for taking part in the census. Originally, it was expected to close by July 31st. Now, an additional three months have been tacked on to that timeline. So you have until October 31st to respond on your own. Additionally, the non-response follow-up, which is actually where folks go outdoor to door through other events to get folks to take part, that has also been extended from July 31st to October 31st. Only this week, where the local Census Bureau offices here in Travis County reopened, and it will take them some time before they get back to the capacity they were once at to try to get out and knock on doors. If we'd like, and then there at the bottom, you'll see some impacts to redistricting, a very important one, which is for the US Congress. There is still a bit of debate and conversation occurring at the US Congressional level over whether this extended timeline will be approved. The Bureau actually needs statutory relief before this becomes an official timeline, although the Census Bureau and many of the partners working around it are already treating it as such. So I unfortunately cannot give y'all absolute certainty that this is the new timeline because Congress still needs to approve it. Next slide, please. Next slide. So here's an interesting couple of slides that our city demographer, Ryan Robinson, had put together. He usually joins me on these type of presentations. Unfortunately, he had some technical difficulties and was not able to join. But just big picture, the state of Texas is not doing great in our response rates. A lot of the states, for the reasons that we've already talked about here earlier on the PowerPoint presentation, have put significant public dollars and raised significant philanthropic dollars to try to increase turnout in this year's census because so much is at stake. However, as of May 31st, around fifty-five percent of expected Texas residents have responded. Next slide, please. As far as on the county level here within the state of Texas, you know, considering that we aren't doing as well as other states around the country, but just focused here within the state of Texas, we are the second highest responding large Texas county in the state of Texas. Tarrant County is currently above us. Our neighbors to the north in Williamson County, similar to a lot of other suburban counties around the state, are performing at a higher level than us. But we're working with them on different strategies and trying to learn whatever we can from them. But I am proud to say that we are the second highest responding big county in the state of Texas. Next slide, please. But then, as far as the city goes, we had been the highest, we had been the largest high respond, or highest large Texas city, highest responding large Texas city up until about a week ago. El Paso has, has caught up with us, and you'll see there that they're about fifty-nine point six percent response rate, we're at fifty-nine percent. But over the last month or so, we have either been the top or the second highest responding large city in the state of Texas. And like I mentioned, second highest in the county, but I really want to book in that with that the state of Texas as a whole is simply not doing that well. I think we're forty-first in response rates compared to other, other states around the country, and we have so much at stake uniquely here in Texas. Next slide, please. And what I'm going to briefly go over here, just as far as our actual campaign strategies and outreach efforts are, is just a reminder of what our strategic plan is, how we've used the budget that we were given, and what we've been able to raise in the form of grants, how we've spent it. We have an exciting regional media grant. I'll discuss how we're trying to focus our limited remaining dollars, given the timeline has extended, and then try to give you all a couple of highlights institutionally and grassroots-wise. So next slide, please. So as y'all know, this, this program was, it was inaugurated last year. I was brought on shortly after, around August, September. Something that was really great was that an institutional effort was already underway in the form of a complete count committee, of which some of y'all serve on. But something that was really lacking from this effort was, was grassroots participation. And so that has been a large focus of this program here over the last nine months. I really appreciate every single one of y'all and your office teams because y'all have been a huge part of building that out. And I'll go into some of the successes with that. But then another part of the strategic, strategic plan for this effort was our media outreach. So I'll get into the regional media grant here in just a minute about how we're, how we're tackling that. Next slide, please. This is a rough budget mix of how we've spent the dollars we've been granted thus far. Right now, our total budget includes around four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand of which was from the city of Austin, a matching two hundred thousand from Travis County, and then a fifty-nine thousand dollar grant from the Central Texas Pool Fund. We've gone after about a half dozen different grants. But frankly, Travis County is just simply not as hard to count as other counties throughout the state of Texas, specifically Western Texas and the Valley of Texas and other portions of urban counties around the state. But what you'll see here is a majority of our dollars have gone directly towards community canvassing, which has looked very different than we initially expected it to be. We are gearing up for a very large grassroots door-to-door campaign, which we had just launched the first one a week before COVID shut down the city. But in that time, what we've instead shifted over to is phone banking, which I'll get more into the folks who are actually leading those efforts in just a moment. Flyer drops safely at different events, or resource facilities are providing supplies to folks who are already out talking to vulnerable communities, targeted advertising. So we were able to partner with Statesman Media, who, you know, the Statesman was already a member of our CCC, and they were able to work with us on a really great deal of package that included targeting specific census tracks as directed by our city demographer and the grassroots folks we had helping us out with community-specific advertising. We received that regional media grant I mentioned just a moment ago, and I'll dig into a little bit more in here just a second. Our digital outreach has included creating content locally for us. There's nothing wrong with what the Census Bureau has produced, and frankly, we tried to localize it, and we've tried to take what we heard from our grassroots groups, what they thought were the most important talking points, and put those into the materials we're, we're spreading around the community. And then lastly, we've had less than ten percent of our budget go towards different financial services costs. And then also, we brought on a digital coordinator in the time of COVID to make sure we had someone managing all those different pieces, given how important it had become during the COVID-19 outbreak. Next slide, please. So this is the, the regional media plan I referenced just a while ago. This was something really exciting, the Central Texas Pool Fund, which was a group formed by the St. David's Foundation, Austin Community Foundation, and being administered by the United Way of Greater Austin. They, they came together and, you know, put almost four hundred thousand dollars in total funding available to different groups around the five county region. We actually partnered with neighboring counties on going in for this regional media grant. The thinking behind this was is that rather than duplicating efforts or trying to buy competing advertising space, and that given that we were already likely going to be making a large media buyer effort, that we try to do that in partnership with these smaller counties who would benefit from it naturally, but then also would, you know, be able to help instruct its messaging. And so what we ended up landing on is the most effective way of doing this was focusing on our Hispanic Latino population, Asian American and Black African American populations here in Travis County, in the five county region, and trying to equitably distribute those dollars based upon their share of the population. Next slide, please. And so what that looks like specifically for the Hispanic Latino population is that we took about forty thousand of that fifty-nine thousand dollars and did something that hasn't really been done before. We approached the two different media corporations that run all four of the Spanish-speaking radio stations here in the central Texas area, and we've put them on the same team. And what they are doing is coordinating on different universal scripts, languages. They're helping support our grassroots group through this community, Contamos Austin, by trying to promote events that they are putting on. And we've got some really exciting events that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks that hopefully are sustainable and involving the grassroots and these media partners. You'll see there in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, some of the tracks, for example, that we're trying to talk about, or whenever they're reading through their scripts or speaking to folks live on the air, talking about relevant issues in those neighborhoods. They can try to hyperlocalize this as best as possible. And then nineteen thousand of that fifty-nine thousand dollars will then be split between Asian American and Black African American population, of which the Asian American grassroots effort is helping identify different tracks where we're going to test out different languages and different ad, advertising strategies in those tracks, and then try to measure if anything actually happens in terms of response rates. Next slide, please. So this is something really exciting to, just to share with folks is that we've developed a big suite of different digital resources. Unfortunately, like I mentioned at the beginning of this, this might be a different PowerPoint than was originally prepared. It's missing out on some of the cool dashboards and maps that our digital team has produced in addition to these materials. But quickly, what you'll see here on the screen in the bottom left is what we call our universal push card. It was designed with the talking points that our different community groups said that we're the most important ones to talk about. It's bilingual, both English and Spanish. Tens of thousands of these have been distributed by hand at different resource facilities or dropped off in different resource bags and packets over the last couple of months. You'll see there in the middle a poster, which actually has been prepared and sent over to Austin Public Health, where they will now be posting those posters around town. And then in the bottom right-hand corner there, you'll see two of our amazing community leaders who are holding up yard signs that we've produced, and we're actually getting several hundred more that are outstationed around different areas in hard-to-count neighborhoods. Next slide, please. And so this is a really interesting new thing that we're doing as a campaign. Given a lot of the stuff I've already discussed with y'all, including that extended timeline, where now we're having not, you know, we have a great opportunity here with additional time, but also it's a, it's problematic in terms of trying to figure out how to budget the remaining dollars we have left because we had budgeted for a certain length of a campaign. So what we're trying to do is figure out what has worked thus far in certain census tracks. And what we're really fortunate to have here locally is, is a digital team that was formed with talent from both the city of Austin, Travis County, and volunteers from open Austin, as well as our community groups. They can't, they have come together and figured out different ways we could track different tactics working and whether or not they were successful. And because of that, we've identified some very basic and traditional grassroots tactics that are making a difference, such as phone banking through lists that we acquire through different community groups to residents within specific census tracks, mail, you know, titled from local elected officials or community leaders to their, you know, their mailboxes, and then also being out at resource centers and, you know, in a safe capacity, making sure that there's language and signage and other things out there to remind folks about the census. The other benefit of having this digital team and the advice and guidance from our city demographer is that we can now kind of figure out which census tracks are just not moving. They're not trending up, they're not having a higher response rate, even when we're doing things generally across the county. And the map you see here on your screen is a targeted area where things are sticky. They're not moving that much, and it's an area that I'm sure will be familiar for all of y'all here on council is that it's facing a number of different hurdles as a community. I do want to give a quick thank you to Councilmember Cesar and his office for helping connect us with different groups within this, this neighborhood area. This is roughly North Lamar Runburg. And what our goal is here is to try to apply these measured tactics, ones that have shown that in, within a day to three days after we go out, by we, I mean these grassroots groups go out and do certain things, there's an increase in the response rate, which we can see live day to day. And so we're going to be able to measure the impact we have in this, this, this area. And we refer to it as our intersectional focus area because you've got a number of different diverse communities. They're all hard to count, and we've got a number of different nonprofits that will be able to assist with it. Frankly, the only thing standing in our way from doing even more, we're trying to have additional focus areas. Again, it's just our budget has reached its limit, and we're having to try to measure that out and try to create some case studies, at least for future efforts as well. Next slide, please. This is something we're doing countywide, so again, we're kind of focusing in very narrow and specific area that we can track our efforts, but then we'll try to maintain a county-wide approach to our efforts. And that county-wide approach is really encapsulated in this thirty-day challenge. We had intended to have a large, you know, media release and more announcements about this thirty-day challenge in the month of June. But obviously, you know, we wanted to be respectful and responsible with, you know, all the events that have gone on this past weekend. And so we are trying to be mindful of that. But just to let you know, we have prepared this mini campaign. It's a thirty-day strategy with social media assets and digital collateral established with it. We've got an amazing internal team at the city of Austin, helping out volunteers on our digital team. This is specifically being led by Alicia Lane in the planning department. But what you'll see there on the side is kind of our main talking point for folks. And this is for maybe folks who have already taken the census or are looking to help, which is, look, if we can get in one month fifty thousand households counted, that's just, that's not just a hundred and twenty-five thousand people who now, you know, who are, who are being counted here locally. That's a hundred and eighty-five million dollars per year we're securing in federal funding. So we're trying to make sure that folks understand that the different types of impacts this has locally. Next slide, please. And you can click through the next two slides. These are just examples of the digital toolkit, some of the stuff we've, we've put together. Next slide, please. But this is the exciting stuff, and this stuff, unfortunately, I have to, I'll have to speed through because I know I only have a limited amount of time with y'all. But before we get into these individual, individual efforts, I just have to, again, thank the amazing team of folks who've come together to make the census a priority for their organizations, their communities, and have really helped translate a lot of this technical or very governmental stale-sounding information to things that are relevant and important for these communities. Because frankly, a lot of the things that make a person or a neighborhood hard to count don't disappear in the nine years between the ten, every ten-year decennial census. And so they're working really hard to make sure that it's relevant to their communities and is honestly sustainable beyond just this particular campaign. But let's go ahead and click to the next slide. Our Black African American Community CCC, which again, CCC is a governmental acronym for Complete Count Committee, but this is our community CCC. They were formed largely through a huge amount of organizing effort by Neil Whitstone. A lot of the folks you see in that picture down there below, thank you, Councilmember Harper Madison, for not only giving your voice and support to this, but quite literally lending your staff to this effort. And you'll see there in the bottom, that's actually a still from a YouTube video ad that we are digitally marketing across different tracks targeted to the Black African American population. You'll see, you know, council members and leaders from different parts of the county. Up in the top right, you'll see this was unfortunately what was, what we thought a very promising start to a door-to-door canvassing operation. That was at the HTU Homecoming event. That was right before COVID broke out. And this campaign is branded in its own materials, largely, you know, provided by and partnership with the Austin Urban League, which is Make Black Count. And you'll see their logo up there in the top left. And again, I can't stress enough that, you know, you'll see a lot of different folks. I'm sure a lot of y'all will recognize in these different photos that, you know, they have done the work to make this its own independent effort. And it's been really amazing to see that happen and evolve through COVID. Next slide, please. Our Asian American Community CCC was actually the first one. So they really were the folks who came out and created their own CCC for the region. It was something that was working really well and frankly, kind of cast a light on the more institutional approach we had originally started taking as a campaign. And we shifted, we evolved, we adapted, and that's what spurred these other community CCCs. And so not only do they have a similar independent online presence with independent YouTube videos, they similarly scripted a video and produced it, and we helped financially support that. They also have a unique partnership with the University of Texas, with a lot of the Asian American students who live and study there. But you'll see there, I love this, these, this picture down here in the bottom left corner. That's a lot of the different community leaders. There's pages of those tiles of folks who were on those calls. So there, that was them, you know, getting ready and getting for a more digital-oriented campaign. And there's just so many different folks within that effort, specifically Alice Yee, who's been an amazing champion for so many different communities, who really stepped up and pushed this and kind of led by example for us to try to replicate that in other communities. So thank you to them. Next slide, please. This is, this is another effort that, that popped up organically. This has actually started after the last council briefing. So Councilmember Flanagan, thank you as well for quite literally lending your, your staff's time and energy towards organizing this. We have a LGBTQ-focused community CCC. You know, a lot of that digital content assistance that I mentioned was helped like designing logos or other things. You'll see in the top right corner, a video that they produced with different, you know, trusted faces and voices from around the community. And you can see some of the sample ads that they themselves are measuring and testing out. We're trying to, we tried to make sure that we also budget support for them as well. We haven't had enough, you know, there never is enough for, for, for outreach. But I'm really proud of this amazing work that they've been able to get going. And you can see the different PSA videos they've got, their different website. And one of the really amazing things that they've been able to do as well is help provide kind of an intersectional guidebook on how in different communities to talk about the issue of the census with folks beyond just one specific, just one specific paradigm, right? Just one specific lens. And so that's been really interesting to watch happen and evolve over the last couple of months. And thank you so much to Marty and Julia at the city, who've helped put this effort together and out you for stepping up as a, as a fiscal sponsor. Next, next slide, please. This is our Hispanic Latino CCC. This was a lot of different work because, you know, the Hispanic Latino population is by far our largest hard-to-count population here in Austin. It's also one of our most diverse populations. And this CCC, which you'll see a picture here in the bottom right-hand corner of some of those members meeting. I think it was eight AM or seven thirty AM for breakfast one morning several months ago prior to COVID. They've worked really hard to identify different target areas. You'll see there in the top right, Constable George Morales, who really stepped up big time. I mean, this would not have been possible without his office and his leadership on getting folks to the table, figuring out how to turn words into action. And, and so his office has been really big. They applied for a grant that we supported from a statewide fund so they could get actual assistance day to day specifically on the census. And then the top left there, you'll see their logo and kind of their rallying cry, which is Contamos Austin. And they've got a really exciting plan they are, they're developing with our Spanish-speaking radio stations here locally and Pellegroza, which is a local cultural media or, you know, cultural artist hub to make sure that we're getting out things bilingually and through different cultural lenses. And so as many folks as possible feel like they're being included in this census messaging. Next slide, please. This is a deep dive. I'll, I'll move through this as fast as possible. You can look at the details here in just a moment, but it was the one correction on the slide is it should be thirty-one hundred residents. But that's a specific track, similar to that intersectional area we'll be focusing on that was very sticky. It wasn't growing. Next slide, please. Response rate was not going up. Constable Morales and his team there in southeast Travis County in particular, in partnership with Contamos Austin, they did a number of phone contacts. They were out there in the area, putting up signs, talking to property managers. Next slide, please. Something that's really amazing with these response rates is you can see the difference as it happens. And so I really want y'all to check out this slide right here because you can see literally in the days that they went out there and did that grassroots activation, look at that bump right there before May third. Do you see how it just jumps up and then goes up? That's as a result of the efforts they did. That's as a result of the dollars y'all put towards this effort, which we were then able to work through these organizers on the ground. And so outside of actual census data, there hasn't been other bumps like that. You know, we've worked to make sure this isn't happening in neighboring tracks as well. And Constable Morales and his team can show you time after time where they went in, did certain activities, response rate went up. And so we're hoping to do a larger case study in that intersectional area up around North Lamar Runburg. Next slide, please. Next slide. So I wanted to make sure we also gave credit to our institutional partners. You're doing a lot of amazing work. Austin Independent School District is our largest school district here in the city and the county. It's not the only one at all, and, you know, we've had contact and tried to provide resources where we can, but we focused a lot of organizing activity with their parent support specialist, Leonor Vargas, and a lot of the folks who support her. There were trainings of all the different PSSs at different schools, advertising materials, T-shirts, posters put up at Title I schools. You'll see there an image of a school bus. That's one of the buses that's going out and providing free Wi-Fi access to students and neighborhoods so that way they can go online and still study and be in class. And it's got census-specific materials letting folks know that, hey, this matters, this is connected. Next slide, please. Here's another example. This is in our healthcare field. Central Health was huge and stepped up. I want to give a shout out to Perla and Yvonne and their team. You'll see there in the top right corner, a map that we produced locally of different healthcare facilities in hard-to-count areas. One of the, you know, projects of our digital team was trying to figure out areas that had certain hurdles, and we matched those up with healthcare, and those were going to be places we were going to have mobile census stations. And we were all geared up for that. When folks would come in, they'd be able to take it. COVID has obviously changed that, but Central Health has really evolved and adapted. You'll see copies of some of the postcards that will be going out to tens of thousands of different folks, sixty thousand in fact, in priority zip codes of folks that they have the information for. And so again, this is about talking about the census in these specific neighborhoods from different angles that are important to those communities. And this is another example of how an institutional partner stepped up. Next slide, please. And then the city of Austin, which at this point, I, if, if time still permits, I'd love to welcome Tara Olson onto the call, who's been a leader in the city through the Public Information Office, making sure we get out word through different channels available to them. Tara, do you want to jump on?
Yeah, thanks, John. So the city of Austin has a number of marketing efforts and communications that are underway and continuing to be developed by our team. We have a strong digital presence, and we are continuing to look for more ways to get the messaging out that's addition, in addition to digital safely and effectively. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for everything you've been doing to help share out the Census 2020 messaging. Those nightly video messages you're doing, Mayor, are very inspiring and really, really effective. Social media platforms and newsletters that you are sending out are extremely effective, so thank you so much for that. All of our digital presence and marketing materials that have been created and inspired by our grassroots leaders and community groups, or CCCs, if we've been referencing, are extremely valuable. And this team is incredibly collaborative, and I'm extremely proud of the group that's come together. You'll see some of those examples of these materials that we've been referencing in the slide. The atx census2020.com website was put together by city staff, largely by our own Mateo Clark, who has, and, and he's built the site himself. It has a number of valuable resources for our community, featuring resources from our Austin-Travis County Census 2020 community groups, including our video PSAs that John referenced, podcasts, and virtual town halls held by all of these groups. I, I urge you to check out the website and, and see those. They're incredible resources. We also have recent news from both English and Spanish local media outlets. We have upcoming virtual events that continue to be populated in the website from our community groups and other grassroots members. A digital toolkit resources that are available in both English and Spanish, including a toolkit for the thirty-day response challenge that's underway now that John referenced earlier. We have weekly social media promotions in English and Spanish on all city of Austin platforms, postcards in English and Spanish that have been provided for resource packets for the Eating Apart Together initiative, and Austin Public Health Distribution. The Austin Transportation Department is coordinating, has been coordinating census messaging on their electronic road signs. And more messaging on these signs is, is set for the week of June 22nd. We've had a few of them during the pandemic, and it's, they've been very effective. Census messaging has and continues to be included in several city newsletters. Austin Utilities Now inserts email distributions and shared printing materials. We continue to provide census update presentations to our city boards and commissions and have a few scheduled this month virtually. Thank you to all councilmembers and mayor staff for connecting us to boards and commissions that we should be reaching out to. It's been very helpful. We look forward to continuing these promotions and developing messages that continue to reach and inspire all of our communities in Austin and Travis County. And we will be discussing ways to kind of move forward with messaging, crafting it, and making sure that it, it represents the tone that we need to represent.
Thank you, Tara. And can we jump to the next slide, please? And y'all, you might see there in that last slide there, there was a brown bag with one of our universal push cards there on some rolls of toilet paper and some other things. That is thanks to Austin Public Health, who is distributing thousands of those in conjunction with a lot of their other outreach efforts. That kind of partnership wouldn't have been possible without the mayor and his team for, you know, kind of suggesting ways that we can try to make sure we talk to as many folks as possible. So in addition to those supply bags, when folks call in for information on COVID testing, they'll hear about the census. We're getting another round of yard signs to go out to different locations that Austin Public Health has identified as open and in those targeted neighborhoods. So thank you to all of y'all's office, offices. Our next countywide CCC meeting will be Wednesday, June 17th. What are these meetings? It's largely institutional and they're focused. It's getting a lot of the different groups or folks that y'all, y'all know or likely serve on other boards with. But it's also a great moment really for us to kind of review what we're doing and make sure it's in tune with the grassroots leadership that's also leading this campaign, which, you know, before we end this presentation, I did just want to quickly thank again Councilmember Harper Madison for all the work that your staff has done to make sure that this, this campaign, you know, is reflects the Black African American communities, talk about issues important to them. Thank you, Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Garza and Councilmember Renteria for y'all's help getting that Hispanic Latino CCC up and running. It wouldn't have happened without y'all. And District Four, you know, Councilmember Cusar, thank you so much for, you know, helping provide us kind of the behind the scenes so we can figure out how to make an impact effectively. You know, Councilmember Kitchen, thank you so much for your support, getting this budget up and going for us. On the LGBTQ CCC, thank you, Councilmember Flanagan, for your staff and time and energy on that. Councilmember Poole, who I, I've got to brag on her real quick, y'all. She's had her staff, chief of staff, Luisa Burns made send out individualized emails to all of the neighborhood leaders in hard to count tracks. That's an amazing effort. Thank you so much for doing that and getting us connected with them. And then Councilmember Trox Claire has done similar efforts where she's localized this issue for her newsletters. And then Councilmember Tobler's office, thank you so much for your staff's time trying to peel back the issues at, at the University of Texas campus and helping push that leadership to get out the word. And Councilmember Alter, thanks for making sure we're mindful of our boards and commissioners. I know your staff has been helpful to get us connected. But thanks so much, everyone, for everything y'all have done to help get this thing going.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. This is incredibly important work. Councilmember Harper Madison.
Two things. One, I just got to be real clear. You're not Jonathan, you're John. And her name is Paige Ellis. When you go back and watch the video, you'll see what you did wrong. Also, I just want to echo your sentiment, you know? Thank you to all my colleagues and their staff, but Neil Whitstone, man, thank you. I'm proud of you. I appreciate you. Thank you so much for all your effort.
Anybody else have anything on this presentation? Yes, I just nearly made a bad joke, but Councilmember Morales.
I, I really appreciate all the work that y'all have put into this. And I know when Ryan Robinson had sent us our census information, we had a list of some of the, the more non-responsive census tracks. And it was really helpful when y'all went back and gave us all the neighborhoods because we were able to spoon-feed that to our precinct chairs and other group leaders who were able to put the word out. So I really appreciate y'all drilling that information down for us and making sure that we could use it in a way that was easiest for our districts to, to send out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. And my phone just got blown up with several texts. I think I'm showing a, showing the time at City Hall with the different spaces with different names. I'm so sorry for that.
You're totally fine. And if Councilmember Trox is also trying to get people to fill out the census, I'm more than happy with that. That's fantastic. The more the merrier.
Anything else on this? Everybody should be doing their part. It sounds like a lot of people are. Anybody watching this is, they put their shoulder to this too. John, Tara, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City.